Head and make sure that we've got our other council members in line. The president, council president Pro Tem. Do we have council member Sanchez?
No, Madam Mayor.
Let's go ahead and pick up the first item after we have the clerk call the roll.
Bejant.
Here.
Clegg.
Here.
Hallie Burton.
Here.
Sanchez. Willetts.
Here.
Woodings.
Here.
I present one absent.
Thanks. First up, we have Eric Simpersen. Great. Hi Eric. With the interim budget changes.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We have four interim budget changes for your consideration this afternoon, all four of which are revenue neutral in fiscal year 22. The first is related to maintenance of our housing portfolio. It would be a shift of funds out of our capital fund into our property management fund for the maintenance of our city rental housing assets. The second item is actually two, there's two items relating to the police department. The first is for a laser crime scene scanner, which is used to reconstruct crime and crash scenes. The purchase of this equipment will result in time savings for staff. The majority of this equipment will be supported from a federal grant. The $141,000 cost with $100,000 in reimbursement, leaving $41,000 to be funded out of the general fund that that funding would come out of a previous allocation we we set up as part of the 22 budget called the portfolio fund. The second item would be a software solution for the police department's training and academy record keeping, also resulting in time savings and efficiencies. The cost for that for that system would also be supported out of the portfolio fund. Both of those systems have modest ongoing costs, which would be built into the fiscal year 23 proposed budget. Our third item is a shift of funds related to Americans with Disability Act improvements. It's really shifting the funds out of the community engagement department into the public works department. That's an approach that's consistent with what was recommended and ultimately approved by the city council as part of the fiscal year 21 end of year process. And the fourth item, also revenue neutral, I am, is allocating funds received from the federal government for the continuation of the emergency rental assistance program. That program provides assistance to households earning 80% or below of the area median income. The funds would be administered by the Boise City Housing Authority and the funds total $10.8 million. With that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Well, I don't see any.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we approve the interim budget changes.
Second.
We have a motion, second discussion. Clerk, will you call the roll? Thanks Eric.
Woodings.
Yes.
Bejant.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. And next up, we have Nikki to walk through the short term rental ordinance. Oh, sorry, and Jamie also. I was looking at my notes. Oh, Jamie's on here too. This is the work session that council requested in with the changes based on the list of things that came up that night at the hearing. Jamie, I think I'll walk through it. And then it's time for discuss, and you'll probably have some discussion topics to point out. Great, thanks. I'll just let you take it away.
No worries. Madam Mayor, council members, thank you for having us back today to talk about the short term rental ordinance. I'm Jamie Heiserling, deputy city clerk with the city, and this is Nikki Helen Camp, who is the mayor's housing advisor. So again, thank you for having us back today. As you know, the goal for staff as we began drafting this ordinance was really to safeguard the public health, safety, and general welfare, and to protect the integrity of neighborhoods. In addition, we know that this ordinance, as we're putting forth, would help us better understand the impacts as well of the short term rentals on the larger housing market and allow us to base our decisions in policy moving forward based on data. Originally, we came to you in October of 2021 at a council work session to discuss the various ordinance requirements to let you know and outline what we were looking at and seeking your direction at that time. Couple of items that we were tasked with out of that meeting were to really look at the business license ordinance approach versus a data approach. And we came back and presented that to you at the January meeting. In addition, we were asked to look at insurance requirements and brought back the information with regards to best practices for those insurances and the safety of the public, as well as those renting various houses. In January, in 22, we had that public hearing in which we heard from the public, received public testimony based on the ordinance as it was presented. And we also received council direction on next steps, which brings us to where we are today, February 22, at the work session here before you. And we would like to go over and review the amended ordinance based on the comments that we heard from you, as well as from the public. And based on those changes, seek your direction on moving forward and next steps. So again, we heard very strongly from council as well as the public that there were several items within the ordinance that we wanted to have removed. First is a requirement of licensing that would have required an amenities list for each location, as well as a detailed floor plan. So the revised ordinance, as it is before you today, has those items removed from the code. In addition, we had lots of questions with regards to the definitions. And so we really sought to clarify some of the existing definitions that we had. But we also added definitions, and you can see the list of those added definitions here, which will hopefully get us to some of the questions that we heard from all of you regarding, we want to know the types of units that are out there. Right? Is it an accessory dwelling unit? Is it owner occupied? Is it a bedroom that's being rented out? And so some of these definitions that we have added, some of these definitions that we've clarified, and I'll walk through those here in a minute, will allow us to get to some of those data points that we were looking to have. Again, we refined definitions, and as I mentioned, things like bedrooms were things that came up and that weren't clearly defined based on the direction that we received. Therefore, we took a look at the definition of short term rentals, for example, to make sure that we could capture the data for things like how many bedrooms are being rented, or do you need a license if you're only renting out a bedroom versus an entire unit? We also refined the definition for lodging operator, just to clarify. And then we also took a look at things like the questions we got with regards to all owners need to be listed. We got questions about who are all of the owners? What kind of contact information do we want to get for those owners? Why do we have them listed? The reason for that, and we again clarified within the code, is to make sure that we have contact information if there are legal problems with a property. If there are challenges with a property and we need to notify an owner, we actually have the information, not just of one owner, but if there's multiples, we can let every owner know what's going on with the property that they're invested in. We also, with the contact information, sought additional clarification on things like who is a local agent? What is a local contact? And when do we need those? And it's really somebody who can just respond if there is a problem within a timely manner, rather than having just folks that might be out of state or out of the area that aren't able to respond to something that is more of an immediate need. Additional components that we added, not necessarily onerous, but things that we want to make sure that are included and oftentimes are already included in some of the marketplaces that we do see, are things like quiet hours. Again, going back to the integrity of the neighborhoods, having quiet hours between 10:00 PM to 8:00 AM. Making sure there's safety requirements that we can kind of track and that we can use as educational components. Do you have smoke detectors? Do you have carbon monoxide detectors, those types of things? Do you have a trash plant onsite? Are you using city trash services? Are we really addressing those types of things versus asking people, for instance, to maybe take their trash with them as they're leaving? Again, making sure we have those components in place. Also, making sure that we have a display of license at the facility, and then also, again, a local representative to address some of the questions and concerns of the more immediate needs. An additional comment that we heard from council was a concern of an onerous process, and certainly that is not the intent of staff. We don't want to have an onerous process, and I'm sorry that this is not a little bit easier to see on your screen. But we wanted to simply make sure that we had an application that was easy to fill out. On the one side, you can see applicant information. Basically, that is contact information that we're getting. That's a very standard type of basic form that we use for all license types. Also, to gather some of the information that we were hoping to have, things like what is the property type? You can see here, those are checkboxes. That's really what we want them to do is let us know, are they an accessory dwelling unit? Is it an apartment? Is it owner occupied? So on and so forth. Additionally, what kind of property features? We also have a tie in on this example of the marketplace name along with the listing number, so we can cross reference to the listings and the information that we're receiving as well with this business license, in case there are complaints, we can address those types of things. So with regards to next steps, as you know, we have already had the public hearing for this item. And so there would be no requirement to have an additional public hearing. But today, we are seeking your direction on next steps. If you would like us to go back and make amendments, we can certainly do that. Or if you would like, we can also move it on to the ordinance reading calendars, which would be three separate readings of the ordinance on three separate days. We've talked about the implementation process if we're to move forward, what that timeline looks like, as well as our community outreach approach and education as far as next steps. So I'm happy to go into that further if there's additional questions, or if you'd like additional information today. And then we also heard that we would like to have follow up with council based on the information that we have received and the follow up on complaints, number of complaints, so on and so forth, in 12 months, and are happy to come back and do that based on council direction. So with that, Nikki and I will stand for any questions that you might have with regards to the amended ordinance.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Jamie. So would this ordinance sunset at the 12 month mark? Or what are we talking about here?
Madam Mayor, council member Sanchez, currently, we do not have it drafted to sunset at that time. However, we would come back based on the direction received at the last meeting, come back to council with a report on the information and data that we have. And then council can make a determination from there. If you would like it to sunset, we can certainly take that into consideration and make that policy change for this ordinance.
Madam Mayor, just a quick, but I think because the way we've talked about this ordinance has really been in terms of information gathering and learning exactly what the impact of short term rentals has been in our community, that I think we should talk about that, the possibility of having it sunset after a year and then determining if it's something that needs to continue. That's just my two cents.
Well, council member Sanchez, what we have typically done with ordinances where we've tried, such as, I think even the rental fee application ordinance, and I'm sure that there were some when I was on council, is that we've asked for reports at six and 12 month periods, so then we can determine whether or not changes should be made, rather than creating a sunset provision within the ordinance.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Um, is there a possibility of us looking at this a little bit sooner at maybe the six month mark, if that's the case?
Oh, sure. Yeah, that'd be fine.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. If I, if you'd called me, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you. Go ahead.
That's okay. So Jamie, I have a couple of, I guess, questions for you. The the checkmark that you checklist that you showed us, I think is a good start, but it doesn't, for instance, have a checkmark for, I agree to maintain and post quiet hours. I agree to maintain safety equipment and then have the list of what safety equipment you have. I agree to trash trash collection as required. To me, those simple things, saying, yes, I agree to these things in your ordinance, make make it more clear and very simple. So that's my first point. My question is, in asking that we have every owner be listed, if the owner is an investment company that has many investors, I assume the owner of listing will be the investment firm and not the investors. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, council member Clegg, I can look into that with our legal department, but I think it is, if they have somebody who is representing them as like an LLC or a corporation, then that would be who would be listed, but I can verify that with our legal department. But typically, that's how we do it, and we do require all owners to be listed on various license types that we do have, and that's probably how we do that.
Yeah, I wasn't disputing that, just wondering, in the case of a investment firm, I assumed it would just be the firm. Thank you.
Madam Mayor. Sure, council member Woodings, and then council member Hallie Burton.
Thank you. I heard from a couple of folks, Jamie, about the requirement to have a conspicuous posting on the premises, and some people expressed concern that that would be on the exterior of the premises. And so people passing by would know that it's a short term rental. Can you clarify that for us real quick, please?
I will look that up here in just the next couple of minutes, Madam Mayor, council member, but I believe on the ordinance, it does say that it's on the interior, not the exterior. But let me verify that as I walk through here.
That was my reading also, but I just wanted to confirm that out in the public so that folks could understand that a little bit better. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, yeah, it was my understanding that that was on the interior as well when I read it. Back, I guess, to one of the questions that council president Clegg brought up as far as the checkbox list in the ordinance itself, it does look like those things are mentioned as being part of the requirements. And I don't know if there is a supporting document that goes with the checkboxes as well, like that's simply the thing that you have on file, and then somebody signs a paper, I would believe as well. Are there other things that would be in place that would address those needs, or do they need to actually be on that same sort of checkbox form?
Madam Mayor, council member Hallie Burton, we can certainly look at it in a number of ways. Currently, what we do is usually have a disclaimer that says you agree to follow not only what's in city code, but also state and federal requirements as well, and require them to sign and agree to that. But we can do that in a number of ways. What I shared was just an example, certainly not a full application, but an example of what could be done to make it a less onerous process. And if council would like us to come back with the draft application to review, we're happy to do that.
Madam Mayor, just to follow up there, I think one of my major goals when I made the motion was to make that process nice and easy. From my perspective, it does look like the process is nice and easy, and it looks like within the language that you have some of those other things that are that are spelled out there. So that satisfies a lot of the the needs that I saw, and then the needs to clarify some of the definitions so that it was clear what that meant. That was another one of the concerns brought up, and that was something that we sent back, and that satisfies my desire there. One, I guess, just kind of small, or two small things. One is, what's the difference between owner occupied and owner onsite? Because owner onsite isn't one of the things that's defined, and maybe I just don't know.
Madam Mayor, council member, owner occupied would be that you live in the premises in which you are renting. Onsite would mean maybe it's an accessory dwelling unit, but you live in the actual home.
Great.
So that would be the the difference in those definitions.
Perfect. And then, Madam Mayor, the last question I had, one of the things that we had talked about was parking, and I do see that listed in the ordinance and also listed kind of in that potential checkmarks box, is the idea that we would know, can you pull that back up?
Yes, absolutely. So council member on the bottom, on the right hand side, like the fourth checkbox down on the second half says off street parking spaces and the number of, and then type of spaces, which we could do in like a dropdown that would indicate garage, driveway, so on and so forth.
And so in this particular situation, we're not necessarily dictating how many parking spots that they have to have. We're simply collecting that information. And then in the future, if we notice that this particular place was getting an abnormal amount of complaints about parking, it might inform us on part of the reasons why and what we would potentially need to do to address that concern. Is that the idea?
Madam Mayor, council member Hallie Burton, it is information that we would like to just have. So again, if there are parking concerns, we would know that, oh, well, there is off street parking available. You need to educate your your owner, or excuse me, your renters. Or if there's not, then we can work with them to address some of those things, but it just gives us that information upfront. So we understand, particularly in areas like the North End that have a high concentration, you know, what are the options and what are the opportunities that are out there at some of those locations?
Thank you. Madam Mayor. I had a question about, it's part of 322.7. It's a license conditions paragraph. It's kind of a catchall. And I just wonder what it's for. It says licenses may include conditions. If the city determines at any time that the conditions have not or cannot be met, the application for license renewal may be denied or revoked. But it doesn't seem to say what the conditions are. I just wonder what your thinking was with that.
Madam Mayor, council member Bejant, that is something that's fairly standard in all of our business license applications and requirements. And it is to be able to address not holistically and put requirements on everyone. So for instance, we might not require off street parking, and again, I use parking as a very simplistic example. It's not the only example. But that if, you know, if there's parking concerns, but we're only seeing that in one or two locations, we can then put conditions on their license to address those parking concerns. So maybe it is, if someone rents, you can have no more than X number of cars at your location because it's displacing or impacting other residents in the neighborhood. So again, getting to that neighborhood integrity. However, that might not be a requirement that's necessary for all other short term rentals that are out there. Therefore, we wouldn't put that specific condition within code and apply that to everyone. But where there are those specific challenges with a specific property, it allows us to address those and condition the license to address some of those challenges.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One follow up. And then my second question that I've gotten by email from a number of people is, can you walk through the reasoning for potentially making a violation of this ordinance a misdemeanor?
Madam Mayor, council member Bejant, so a misdemeanor is fairly standard with business licenses and does have an impact greater than infractions and allows us to really move the needle on behavior. As you'll see in the ordinance, we did tie it back to what is our 31A ordinance, which is our larger business license. So it's not just the tools of a misdemeanor, and that's not our only option. But we have the tools of being able to suspend a license before we issue a misdemeanor. We have the ability to revoke a license until somebody comes into compliance and not just issue a misdemeanor. However, if something is really egregious, we are able to also have that misdemeanor tool, you know, in our in our pocket to be able to affect the change. An example that I will give to you is maybe childcare. Very rarely do we shut down a childcare and issue a misdemeanor violation. However, when there are things like drugs that are being operated out of a facility such as that, we're able to use that as a tool to shut down that facility and then take action against somebody that might be an owner.
Thank you. I guess the part I was just confused about, and I mean, it sort of makes sense. I get I get it, but if we can revoke their license, we can stop all the behavior immediately. And so I guess the misdemeanor would be a tool to use for somebody whose license you weren't going to revoke, but you wanted to nudge their behavior in a certain way while they intended to operate?
Madam Mayor, council member Bejant, I think it again gives us another tool that we may not want to just revoke a license. We may want to go on ahead and issue a misdemeanor citation for that because a behavior might be more egregious than just revoking the license. In addition, in 31A, again, our larger business license provisions, if we think that somebody should not have a license in the future, or if there is something that is again fairly egregious, that gives us additional tools and how we manage future licenses moving forward as well. If we think they're just maybe going to move that to another location, for instance, then that actually ties to that individual and their record, so they can't just move down the street.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, but I'll do this one first. So W Director Heiserling, when we were here a couple of weeks ago, there was a number floated around about what the a business license would cost. And then I noticed in the actual ordinance that it said that the city council would determine it. Is there a standard level of license monetary charge that we do? Can you give me some insight into that?
Absolutely. Madam Mayor, council member Willetts, we do have a standard fee methodology, and it's it's based on what it costs us to administer a license. So it takes a look at our fully burdened labor rates for code compliance, for our front admin staff, and we consider that the time it takes to issue that license. And I can certainly provide that formula and methodology, but we have a standard methodology that we use in calculating the costs and the fees for each license type that we have.
Follow up? So can you take a gander about what this would cost?
Yes. So the proposed fee, I'm sorry, the proposed fee is $80 to issue this license. And that is the fee that's being proposed with the actual ordinance.
Okay.
And just to clarify that, that is based on the calculation that you did. So we're not sub, we're not subsidizing the fee. It just covers the true cost.
Correct.
Okay. There have been times in the past where councils decided to reduce fees, like the dog licensing recently. And then council had to find a budget placement to then cover the costs that weren't covered by the cost of the license.
Sure. Madam Mayor, I had one more question, but I certainly want to give my colleagues opportunity. So W Director Heiserling, walk me through the process, because I know that we don't have to do a public hearing. We did one, which is good governance. I noticed that we got a copy of the ordinance, but it wasn't online. I'm wondering, how do we help the public react to this? Especially after what we're going to come through after this work session, like walk me through this process in terms of transparency.
Absolutely. Madam Mayor, council member Willetts, so anybody can certainly obtain copies at any time. That should have been provided online, and that probably falls on me for not having the ordinance and putting it along with this item. So my apologies if it was not out there along with the council item. Typically, it is. The next step in the process, though, is to have those three readings, and the ordinance will be available for the public to review. They can certainly provide the information and any public comments to all of you during those three readings. And if council so desires, they can make changes before the third reading is still completed. So there are opportunities for that. As a next step, before we implement this, we will take time to reach out and educate those that will be impacted as well. So we have an opportunity to reach out and work with neighborhood associations, and we are planning to do that so they can reach out to the people within their community to understand what the next steps are, how to apply. Same thing with the Realtors Association will work with the marketplaces as well, so they can educate anybody who may be using their platforms to come into compliance. And typically, what we do is we give a grace period for people to come into compliance first. We work really hard on that marketing piece to make sure they understand those requirements and then work to follow up individually with those that we might know are not in compliance. We don't go straight to an enforcement route by any means.
But this council could choose to do another public hearing if we so chose, correct?
I was just going to mention one thing before that. Well, a couple of things. The ordinance was released via press release to the media and the public last Wednesday in advance of, which is earlier than typical, because it was in advance of the release of the agenda for the evening. And then also ordinances by ordinance are not required to have public hearings. And we chose to have one on this ordinance to take in the feedback and then take feedback from council the night of the meeting. The changes that ought to be considered to then bring back to work session to then advance forward.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I guess I'd just be remiss if I didn't express probably my minority view that my view is we shouldn't go forward with this. I think there's other views here on the council, but it asks for direction. So that's my personal view.
Yeah, and and right now, I think since there's no more questions or discussion, there's a motion would be in order to then have that conversation.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I would make a move to affirm the direction and to move the schedule, move this to the schedule of reading, ordinance reading with some of the direction that council member Clegg gave as far as making sure that we have with some of the direction that Councilmember Clay gave as far as making sure that we have an agreement in place with the issues that are written on the ordinance.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, a second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there a discussion?
Madam Mayor. Just real quickly, thank you, Councilmember Hallie Burton for your mentioning that, that we make sure that somewhere in that checkbox, there's agreement to follow the ordinance. I'd also ask that staff as they, as this moves forward, if it is approved, that the report that we get includes any violations, penalties, conditions, et cetera, that are imposed on any users as a result of this ordinance. And then lastly, ask if there's possibility, go ahead and post the ordinance with the agenda with this meeting now so that people don't have to wait or go look for it or, or somehow otherwise make it clearly available online.
Madam Mayor, I would just also add that I appreciate Councilmember Willetts' question about a public hearing. My personal view is that we did the public hearing. We found new information that guided us in a new direction that I don't think another public hearing would guide us in a different direction. I think we would get the same information from that one. And so I feel comfortable moving it straight to the schedule without a public hearing.
Madam Mayor.
Okay, we're going to go Councilmember Bajin, then Willetts, then Sanchez and Holly, you're, no, you're muted. Okay, you've been you. All right, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I won't be supporting the motion. And my, the reasons, we've already talked about them a lot. We don't need to do it again. But I'm not sure this complies with Idaho state law. I'm not sure it really targets correctly the behavior we're worried about. For me, if it's noise, then use a noise ordinance. If it's making sure people are insured, apply it to all rentals. If it's, yeah, for me, the shoe doesn't fit in the short-term box here on the harm side. And again, I still worry about the last section of the Idaho state code on short-term rental. So I won't be supporting the motion.
Madam Mayor, I want to echo that I won't support the motion either. Couple of things, I appreciate council and Hallie Burton's comment on a public hearing. I come from a legislative background where every time there's a change, you get more public feedback. It tends to slow things up, but I'm far more comfortable with that. Understand that that's not the case here and that we've gone above and beyond, and I appreciate that. But I was there, like you all were for four hours, and I, I wonder if we've hit the mark. I do appreciate everything that staff has done to soften this. For me, I just don't think it's going to satisfy anyone. I think it doesn't go far enough for the neighborhoods who don't like this at all, who don't like short-term rentals. And for the folks who are trying to run their business, who feel like this is an extra step. So I'll be voting no.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. I will be supporting the motion because I have had a lot of constituents reach out to me. They, they do believe that short-term rentals are a factor in a very tight housing market for long-term rentals. And the reason that I would like to see us looking at the, at the ordinance at the six-month mark, in addition to the 12-month mark, if, if we want to do both, is so that we can gather that information and, and deal with facts versus feelings or impressions. And I think that's what we're dealing with now is people have that impression. If we can give them information as quickly as we can to either prove or disprove their impressions, I think it's important that we do that. And so I will be supporting the motion.
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
I appreciate everyone sharing their, their feelings and their viewpoints on this new piece of policy. I've heard from a lot of constituents and talked to a couple on the phone who had a lot of questions about this business licensing ordinance, including what is this, which is a business license. We license a lot of in-home businesses in the city of Boise for health and safety. And this is no different. We need to make sure that folks are lodging in a way that ensures that they have the tools that they need in case of an emergency, that someone is reachable, that we understand that they have insurance, sufficient insurance, which I'm not sure that a lot of STR operators currently carry. We've heard from a lot of people who are really amazing super hosts on Airbnb. I think that there's a lot more out there who are not super hosts on Airbnb. And those are the folks that are really impacting our neighborhoods. So I'm looking forward to the data that we're able to collect from this business licensing ordinance, including who, you know, what type of ownership we're looking at, connecting complaints on code compliance to rental properties, short-term rental properties, and seeing if there's anything additional that we need to do to protect the health and safety of our neighborhoods. And if not, if everyone is amazing super hosts and everyone loves the short-term rentals in their neighborhood and all is good, perhaps we can get rid of the business license. But if not, we will have the information to make that decision in a way that's not based on anecdotal evidence, that's based on fact and data from our public safety agencies combined with our business licensing department in the clerk's office. So I want to thank Jamie for all of her incredible work taking all of our concerns. And Jen in our legal department, same thing, just really coming together to craft this into an ordinance that is legal, that complies with Idaho statute, that is being adopted by many of our sister cities throughout the state of Idaho for the very same reasons that we are. And hopefully we can come up with a solution where folks can operate their businesses within neighborhoods, neighborhoods aren't negatively impacted, and everyone can have the same opportunity. So thank you. I appreciate it and I'll be supporting the motion.
Yeah, I saw your hand raised. Go right ahead.
Thank you. I will be very short, but I just wanted to add, while I appreciate Councilmember Bajin's concerns and certainly Councilmember Willetts, I trust that our legal department has given us good advice on this in terms of the legality of the ordinance. I trust that the definition of short-term marketplace includes vendors and not the marketplace at large. And I also trust that this council will be very diligent in reviewing this ordinance at the six-month and potentially year review period to ensure that it is doing what we expected it to and make adjustments if we need.
Thank you. Anything further? With that, Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Waddings.
Yes.
Bajin.
No.
Clay.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Willetts.
No.
Or in favor to oppose, motion passes.
Thanks, everybody. Next up, we have Courtney Washburn with the update on our travel policy.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I am Courtney Washburn. I am the Chief of Staff for the city of Boise, and I come before you today with a proposed process for the authorization and approval of travel per council directors, the mayor and the mayor's office staff. And so this hopefully is simple. I'm proposing a three-step process. The first is to seek approval and authorization on council agendas with general information and estimated costs. I put an example here, but you'll notice as we emerge out of COVID, you'll have quite a few on your six o'clock agenda. If you want to see some real world examples of the approval and authorization. Those costs are estimated costs. Step two is after the travel is complete, to publish the additional information on a council agenda for review by the public. And that would have the breakdown of the difference between the estimated costs and the actual costs. And then what those funds went to. The current breakdown is meals, lodging, travel, transport, fees miscellaneous with the travel dates, the destination and the reasons for the travel. And then step three, which has always been in place, and actually Steve Rann is in the audience who runs the Office of Internal Audit, would continue to audit travel expenditures and provide reports. I know I receive those reports and I think the members of that oversight committee do as well. So that is the proposal I have in front of you today. The mechanism would be to formalize these three steps in the master operations manual to ensure the process is formally documented within internal documents about the city. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Courtney. I appreciate you digging into this particular issue and finding a way forward that allows us to approve travel beforehand with less detail in the public and yet being very transparent in the end, making sure that the public gets all the details of what that trouble was, where it was for, what it was spent on, what the money was spent on. And I, in my view, this is a good way forward to ensure that transparency for members of the public and still allow us to get that travel scheduled in a safe and efficient way.
Well, thank you, Council President. Anything else? All righty, since this was information, we don't need to take any action. It'll just get done. Thank you, Courtney. So next up, I see Colin, Cindy and Steve, I guess is here just in the background to discuss the Water and Climate Center update at the watershed. And just, do we have an executive session? I didn't think so. All right. I just want to make sure I was keeping us on track. Thank you. Welcome to you both.
Madam Mayor, council members, nice to see you all this afternoon and thank you for the opportunity to present. My name is Colin Hickman, Senior Communications Manager within the Office of Community Engagement. And with me here, I have my colleague Cindy Bush, the Watershed Education Manager. And really the, the objective for today is, is to show with you, share with you all some of the work that we've been doing on the transformation of the watershed to become the nation's first water and climate science center. And just as a reminder, we're looking for an affirmation of direction at the end of this presentation.
Madam Mayor and council members, my name is Cindy Bush. I'm the Education Manager at the Boise Watershed. It's my pleasure to walk you through a brief history of the watershed, just to provide some context to this project. The education center was envisioned in the early 2000s by Public Works leadership, who really wanted to build a center at the West Boise Water Renewal Facility to show the good work that Public Works is doing to renew water and protect the health of the Boise River and to share that with the next generation to really inspire protecting and conserving our water resources. In 2005, the project gained traction. As a Public Works Commissioner, Donna Marie Hayes formed a nonprofit called Boise Watershed Exhibits Incorporated. And that nonprofit really was tasked with raising money for the exhibits from our community. And they were very successful in their capital campaign of raising over a million dollars for the exhibits initially. The city pitched in $2 million for the construction of the LEED certified building. And our percent for arts ordinance was able to contribute $250,000 toward the public art installations at the center. In 2008, the center opened and it was met with enthusiasm from our community and a variety of segments of our population turned up. We really thought that fourth through sixth graders would be our main audience, but we saw everybody coming through the door, pre-K through gray. And through that, many years later, we've offered thousands of water renewal facility tours, countless programs, and really inspired this next generation to care and protect our water resources. Now to date, we have educated over 275,000 people through the programs and exhibits. It's roughly about 27,000 people annually, and those are pre-COVID numbers. It's also important to note that since the capital campaign that the nonprofit held in 2005 through 2007, they switched their fundraising model to raising awareness and raising funds for one exhibit at a time. And through that process, they were met with a lot of challenges. Sometimes it delayed the project a year or more. And additionally, they struggled with retaining their executive director. And unfortunately, in the next couple of months, they'll be voting to dissolve. So as we look at this project moving forward, the nonprofit partnership will likely be dissolved. Oh, thank you. Thank you. The three pillars of the Watershed Education Center are really the public art, the exhibits and the programming. And I wanted to provide you with a snapshot of our current programming that we offer. We initially set up our programs very similar to our other Boise environmental education partners, Foothills Learning Center and BUGS. And so we tend to see a lot, large audience of K through 12 field trip students coming through the doors as well as college students. And the reason for that is we have formalized partnerships with the Boise School District as well as the West Ada School District. We also offer a variety of programs and events for different segments of our population. In the last two years, we've been able to pivot to virtual education and offering webinars as well as virtual field trips. And so now we're at the point where we are poised with our programming to really kind of launch the, the new Water and Climate Science Center. We're really excited about this project.
I just want to say here, you know, one of my favorite things is hearing kids talk about flushing their toilet. And I, I, it's because of the K through 12 kids in Boise and West Ada that all get to go flush the toilet and see what happens at the watershed. And just through the years being in kids' classrooms and having that come up. I mean, it seems so simple, but the education and the impact is real from the center because it gets our residents, our parents that are hearing from their kiddos, thinking about kind of the impact of water and the whole ecosystem and resource that we have. And so the thing has been incredibly valuable.
As Cindy and I and the team were digging in and have been working on this, it was incredibly important to us that we, we, we kind of never lose sight of the why. What's the big picture? Why now? Why this work? Why this project? And we included those in your memo, but we thought we'd spend a little bit of time here just expounding on those. So the first one is, as you all know, the city passed the Climate Action Roadmap last year that really set bold carbon neutrality goals for our city. I was personally really appreciative and grateful that within the Climate Action Roadmap, education and engagement were called out specifically, not as good to have or nice to have, but as, as critical to ensuring that Boise is able to become a carbon neutral city. And so we see this as the perfect tie with the watershed becoming really a hub and a key hub of education engagement to help get us to that carbon neutral, that carbon neutral goal. Second, I think it's incredibly important to remember that when we talk about climate change, it's, it's what it means to us, what it means to Boiseans, what it means to the Treasure Valley and to our city. And so several years ago, the city of Boise engaged with Boise State University, with the University of Idaho and the Langdon Group to, to really research what are the specific climate impacts to our city and to our region. And out of that research came the realization that there's eight climate impacts specifically identified for our region. Out of the eight identified impacts, six are related to water. So this work is incredibly important. We know that these two things, water and climate, are tied really tightly here, especially in the city of Boise. Furthermore, it continues to elevate the city of Boise as a regional and national leader around climate and water management. The city's made incredible strides already and is viewed already as a leader on both of these topics. And we really view this as a way to continue to elevate that role, to continue to bring on new partnerships, to open new doors, new opportunities. Cindy will mention here recently our work with NASA and the opportunity that this is, this work has provided us. And it's really exciting as we move forward. Next, we'd never want to lose that, that community connection to our water management. So as Madam Mayor mentioned, when water goes down the drain, when it's flushed, we have an obligation to continue that education with. we have an obligation to continue that education with our community, the work that Water Renewal Services, Public Works and the City of Boise do in treating that water, cleaning that water. But perhaps most importantly, where that water currently ends up in the Boise River, we hear time and time again that the Boise River is the lifeblood of our city. And to ensure that we continue to protect and enhance the river, this work that the watershed has been doing and will continue to do is, is paramount. And then lastly, just really looking at it, basically, Cindy and her team at the watershed do incredible work and they're seeing increasing demands around programming, visitors at the center. And then you couple that with outdated technology-based exhibits that were constructed in 2008. And if you can imagine, your technology from 2008, it has evolved quite significantly. And so when you couple those two things together, this was the perfect opportunity to move forward with this work.
I'd now like to share with you the progress we've made in visioning a Water and Climate Science Center. A year ago, we started to work with a local architect and also an exhibit design firm to really gather some community input on what the Water and Climate Center could contain. And as we worked, it resulted in a vision book, which was included in your packet. And so I hope you get a chance to look through here. It's very visually pleasing and really exciting to see the potential direction that we could take with this center. Through the six-month process, we did engage with a couple of stakeholder groups. One was a set of families that frequent the watershed. And so we got some input from children and their parents. And the other was a group comprised of education and climate aware individuals in our community. And so taking their feedback, we were able to build the vision for the center into this vision book. Additionally, behind the scenes for the last year, we've been working on our climate education programming. As Colin mentioned, one of our new partnerships is with NASA's Earth to Sky Team. And a team from Idaho, including a watershed staff member, were the very first cohort to go get trained at NASA's Goddard Science Center to really learn climate communication strategies and to bring that back to Idaho K through 12 teachers and informal educators. And that actually resulted in an education workshop that's happening this week at the watershed. Additionally, it resulted in a webinar series on drought and it'll really spearhead and launch our climate programming. Additionally, we're focusing more on gathering youth voices and youth inputs into our local movement. And so the first Youth Climate Action Council was formed this past year and will continue to work and guide the teen leaders there on that good work that they're doing in our community. Finally, we'll be working on developing a youth climate summit, which will gather teens in our community to come together and discuss local issues and local solutions. Additionally, at the watershed, we have an employment opportunity for teens who would like to work on gaining environmental education experience. And we call that the Watershed Action Teen Program. I also wanted to note that there's a lot of synergy between our programming as well as the Public Works Public Art Plan and looking at the climate public art proposals. And we would love to work with them in terms of outreach into our community, whether it be through art and programming together. And then finally, in terms of new programming, this past year, the watershed secured a $40,000 grant from the Idaho STEM Action Center to develop climate science programming for K through 12 and informal educators. And that will also result in a teacher workshop, a webinar series, collecting climate stories from our community members as well as an event for the public. So we're super excited about the development of our programs. And that really goes in tandem with the vision for the exhibits. So next, I'd like to share a couple of pages from the vision book. First, the project goals. There's four overarching goals that we've determined. First, we hope that the exhibits will capture a wider range of visitors. As I mentioned, they were originally developed for the fourth through sixth grade audience based upon their curriculum. And now we really want to engage every age level, so preschool through adult. And we can do that in a variety of ways. That will probably be non-technology based. If you think about different experiences that you might have had in a science center or museum, there's a lot of exciting ways to engage an audience. Second, we want to make the exhibits a draw themselves. So speaking to the type of exhibits, we hope to develop, it'd be discovery, hands-on science exhibits as well as listening and sharing exhibits and opportunities to provide feedback. And that's what makes this project really unique. Next, we'd like to focus on our local Boise River watershed water resources and raising awareness to climate impacts in our own neighborhood. Everything from what people are visualizing, from drought to increased precipitation days to potential flooding. So this will definitely be a localized center. And finally, all these exhibits add up to a community to stimulate action. And so connecting them with the city's climate action roadmap and our overarching goals for climate action in our community. We've looked at potential themes for the new exhibits and have narrowed those down to these four. One, water, meaning water has been on earth for billions of years and will continue to cycle. But it's up to us to be stewards of that water. And so we will be showing and engaging people with the city's water renewal facility as well as water reuse and looking at our role in the urban water cycle. Next, the Boise River watershed, again, raising awareness as to how important the watershed is to all of us for drinking, for industry, for agriculture, and just kind of thinking about our role in those changing water resources. Next, Innovative City as a theme really showcases the climate action roadmap. It'll give others an opportunity to listen and share their thoughts on the roadmap and ways that they can get involved. And next, community, so involving their personal actions in our movement across our community. So really forming collective action toward combating climate change impacts. I wanted to give you a snapshot of one of the themes, just to kind of visualize what some of the potential exhibits could be. So for the one water theme, for example, it could contain something like an augmented reality sandbox to better understand our water resources. It could include an opportunity for people to bring in a water sample and test the water and compare it to other samples throughout our region. And finally, looking at the urban water cycle and our role in that and connecting it to the K through 12 curriculum. Additionally, with new exhibits could come the opportunity to make some improvements to the space for visitor flow and visitor enhancement. And so these are potential opportunities such as a widened entryway, a space for orienting our visitors. The flow going around the exhibit hall could include some young learner stations. In addition, an enhanced theater system. So these are all possibilities that could come along with the exhibit project. In terms of a timeline for the new exhibits, we've completed the vision phase or discovery phase. And that's the phase that you see in light blue. We are currently marked where the blue arrow is between that discovery phase and the exhibit design. And so we're poised to begin a deeper stakeholder engagement and gathering input from our community as to what types of exhibits and what issues matter to them most. And then really going out for an RFQ for the exhibit designer and getting an opportunity to shape those exhibits. That may be up to a 12-month process of design. Following that would be going out for an exhibit fabricator. And that too could be six to 12 months in production with a goal of installing the new exhibits in the fall of 23.
So I'll just briefly go over the, the funding for this project. As you can see on your screen there, it's split between two years. Fiscal year 22 at 1.57 million. And really what that covers is, as Cindy mentioned, the, the vision book, taking that work and then finishing how we conceptualize that and bring that to a final design of what these exhibits will actually look like, feel like, how they will, what, what they will do, what the interactive features are. Incredibly important as well is that second bullet there, what, what Cindy and I discovered in talking with stakeholders and other partners in this space is that sometimes what they've seen, perhaps a misstep or an error would be, you know, conceptualizing, finalizing the design and then going out and building full-scale exhibits. And so one thing that they really encouraged us to do and that we take very seriously is the, the effort of prototyping. So, you know, ensuring that we have some smaller exhibits so that we can actually test, we can see, we can watch folks interact and we can learn. Perhaps there's ones that just didn't hit the mark. Perhaps there's interactivity that we didn't, you know, think would happen. Perhaps there's others that stand out. So we want to ensure that the exhibits that we bring forward are appropriate and accessible and engaging in the way that we had intended. So you'll see that prototyping there. Additionally, community engagement, as we, as Cindy mentioned throughout this project, is incredibly important so that community members, stakeholders are able to provide ongoing input and help us shape not only the exhibits, but what the center looks like in the future. Then you can see fiscal year 23 at 3.38 million. And that's really the bulk of the work for construction, installation, not only of the exhibits, but, but as Cindy mentioned, kind of the overhaul of the center, what that might look like going forward and those structural improvements. And so just to note that this budget is included in the Water Renewal Fund Capital Plan. So I'll just briefly go over some next steps. So as Cindy mentioned, that one of the most immediate next steps we're counseled to from the direction would be to, to put out an RFQ and start looking for an exhibit designer to make sure that we have someone that is excited about the project, someone that, you know, is a good mesh for the city and the work that we're doing here. Additionally, we'd look to bring on an architect that can help with the space planning, a lot of the work that actually needs to be done within the watershed to accommodate those space improvements. You'll see ongoing engagement with our community and stakeholders throughout this process. And one of the other items that I wanted to touch on was, was the ongoing building of programming. Certainly, the center and exhibits are nothing without the people and the programming that go along with that, the education. And Cindy and her team have been really, really working hard on bringing that programming up to reflect the new mission, the new vision, and ensuring that that's in line and with the expectations of our visitors. So that work will also be ongoing. Also, just wanted to put it on the calendar that right now we have an Earth Day event slated where we will really be unveiling this new vision and mission with the public. And it also provides an early opportunity for us to get input from the community on what this might look like, the exhibits, the center, and we're really excited to share this, work with the community and get input. And then lastly, as Cindy mentioned, slated for a grand opening in the fall and winter. And Madam Mayor, Council Members, I just wanted to close on impact. I, I think as Cindy and I and the team have been working through this, a couple of things really like have, have been front and center throughout this work. And that's just the number of Boiseans and people reached every year. As Cindy mentioned, nearly 30,000 people reached every year. And you can imagine the ripple effects that that has on our community of folks learning the importance of conservation, of climate action, of water management. And, and that grows every single year. So we just see this as an unbelievable opportunity. I think next is just the fact that we, we wrestle a lot with climate change. I think it can also feel very ethereal, feel very far away. And so this presents an unbelievable opportunity to make that real, to make that tangible, something that, whether it's, I love the term from pre-K to gray, you know, any of our audiences can come and interact and touch and feel and wrestle with some of these topics. It just presents a really neat opportunity going forward. And I, I think additionally, it, it takes the work that the city does and, and makes it real. And it's not us talking at folks, it's a conversation and it's about them sharing their stories and how that interacts with the work that we do. You all as council certainly read a lot of memos on, on climate and on water management, which can often, which can often be very technical as they should be. But this, this is a way that brings our community, community members into the fold, into the incredible work that we do in a way that's genuine and in a way that's impactful to their work. So with that, Madam Mayor and City Council will gladly stand for questions.
Madam Mayor. Well, I love the watershed and I know so many people whose kids love it. It always kind of cracks me up because like if these kids love it and I love it, what does it say about me? But that's a separate thing. I'm excited to see the timeline. I'm excited to see this coming together. We've been talking about it for a little while. I like the dynamic, interactive exhibits. I really love that we're incorporating climate. And I just like everything that I've seen here and I think it's fantastic. So thank you.
Madam Mayor. I heard, I think I heard Lisa first and Holly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much for that presentation. Just, just something that I would like to see incorporated if possible. I, I would like to see the original inhabitants of the Boise Valley reflected in the work that we do, especially when it comes to open space, the water, the land. I think this would be an ideal opportunity to reflect that. This might seem a little off topic, but go with me. One of the things that I really respect and admire about Council Member Hallie Burton, when he's wearing his other hat as the Director of a nonprofit, is how he really has expanded the idea of what part of Boise community is. He reaches out to the Duck Valley Indian Reservation. He reaches out to the folks at Fort Hall who are the descendants of the original inhabitants of the Boise Valley. He, he includes people who are behind bars and counts them as members of our community. So for that, I'm really grateful to, to his vision. And I just would like to copy Jimmy a little bit about that as we do this type of work to remember that although the descendants of the original inhabitants of the Boise Valley may not all live here, that we should think of them, especially when we're working on, on this type of education. So I would encourage folks to perhaps include those folks as stakeholders in this work. I was disappointed to see that Gillian Putra was not appointed to the Boise Open Space and Clean Water Advisory Committee. And I'm hoping that when we find people who have that ancestry and are interested in participating, that we find space for them to participate. I think it's, it's something that we, we can do in terms of expanding our idea of who is part of our community. I am really excited for this work. I just would like to see our idea of community and stakeholders expanded.
Go ahead, Council Member Woodings.
Thank you. Colin, one thing that I didn't hear reflected in the budget piece was the 1% for art. I believe that that was part of our discussion when we were talking about the overall water renewal system upgrades, as far as what that 1% for art would mean and where we were going to invest that. Can you cover that a little bit? Or you can just tell me that I'm completely wrong and I'm remembering incorrectly, either one.
Well, Madam Mayor, yeah, first, Council Member Beijing, thank you for your comment. And Council Member Sanchez, appreciate that very much. And I took some notes, so we'll absolutely work on that. Council Member Woodings, to address your, no, you're not, you're not off at all. I think Cindy mentioned the percent for art program and the Public Works Arts Master Plan, which was passed just recently. And so what that will entail is really a, a well-thought-out scoped over, you know, it was built over a year or two, a plan of how we incorporate public art. And one of the things that Cindy, myself, Steve have been talking about is while it's, while it's wonderful that we have the largest concentration of public art in the state of Idaho at the watershed, we also want to focus on getting art into the community more. So rather than centralizing it, or I guess an and/or, rather than centralizing it there, how do we expand that access, the, the ability for other folks to be able to enjoy that public art if they don't make it to the watershed? So yes, I think going forward, Council Member, as we continue to look at how we implement, implement the Public Works Arts Plan, that, that, that percent for art funding will become more clear. And Cindy, I don't know if you have anything to add.
Council Member Woodings, there will be, yeah, as we evaluate the Public Works Public Art Plan, a lot of the projects there would be very suitable in our community as an opportunity to combine art and programming. And so we're looking at the possibility of using some of that funding for the program piece in synergy with watershed staff. However, yeah, I think just echoing what Colin previously mentioned. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for expanding on that. And sorry so much if I missed that in your presentation, Cindy. I've been going through this beautiful booklet that you sent. And so I may have been momentarily distracted. It's a really nice document. So I would encourage any members of the public to go access it in the work session page on our website. It really tells a lot about Really tells a lot about the watershed and its history. So I appreciate all of it. Thanks so much.
Madam Mayor, like the rest of my council members, I'm really excited to see this happen and to see it moving at a pretty quick pace. Couple of things, pre-K to gray might only get you to thirty-nine years old, so you might have to, might have to change that. My question is about the nonprofit that's dissolving and if that has any effect on operations or if that has any impact or if it's separate enough from the watershed that it really doesn't have a large impact.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, the nonprofit group was really tasked with fundraising for the exhibits in particular. And their last fundraising campaign resulted in the completion of the geothermal exhibit, which opened a year ago. And so we don't anticipate that their dissolving will have an impact on our operations as we move forward.
Madam Mayor, I just want to echo my thanks and my excitement that this is in West Boise. I look forward to taking a visit now, but also in the future. And I think it's great that kids from all over the valley can come, particularly those that attend West Ada school. So thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you. I just like, like my other council members, I want to echo how exciting this is. What a really great opportunity it is to expand what we do at the watershed. I would support what Councilmember Sanchez said about the Boise Valley people. The reason that the Boise Valley was this incredible rendezvous spot for them was because of the water and the climate. And so honoring that and teaching about that as the basis for why this wonderful watershed is what it is, I think would be a tremendous opportunity. I'd also like to follow up on Councilmember Hallie Burton's question. While I can understand that losing the nonprofit might not have an immediate impact on the programming, especially because of the capital funding that we have at the moment. I guess I am a little bit concerned, having been a part of creating this wonderful place and creating an opportunity for the community to participate in supporting it and looking at our other programs in the city, especially in the Parks Department, and how well those kinds of partnerships work in terms of expanding both the engagement of the community, but also the opportunities to ensure that the exhibits stay fresh and always moving. I wonder if you have thought about that a little more deeply. And in the future, I guess, I guess I would be concerned that there's not going to be an opportunity in the future for the public to participate in this, that it will be dependent solely on city funds or water renewal funds to do that. And I wonder if you could address that a little more deeply.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Clegg, thank you for that question. Yeah, it's, one of the challenges that the Boise Watershed Exhibits, Inc. did incredible work and was instrumental key in getting the watershed up off the ground. One of the challenges that we ran into toward the end was the way it was structured. So the nonprofit actually owned the actual exhibits, whereas the city then ran the facility and the operations. And it made it really challenging for us to do ongoing repair replacement of these assets that were in really serious need of ongoing repair and replacement. And the other thing that was challenging just was kind of the ebb and flow of board engagement around that. As Cindy mentioned with the loss of an executive director. That being said, so both Cindy and I met with the Friends of the Zoo and the Friends of the Library to explore those models a little bit more, Councilmember Clegg, in direct response to that question. And I think nothing is off the table going forward. I think it was time perhaps for a bit of a reboot, refresh on this. And simply looking at the urgency in needing to replace the assets that had aged out, this made sense to staff, but we are fully invested in any ideas that bring in different audiences, new community members. And if there is a partnership that makes sense going forward, I know Cindy, her team, myself, see, we are totally open to exploring that. And if there's something that makes sense, that has a positive impact on the work, we are all for that. So I hope that addresses your question.
Thank you. It does. I'm glad to hear you're exploring those other models. I would, I would say that just because this particular model at this particular time isn't working, doesn't mean that community engagement isn't there in this arena. I think it probably is. In fact, I know it is from past experience, or at least it used to be. So I'm glad to hear that you're keeping all those options open. If we're going to make this effort sustainable, I think we'll need all hands on deck, and I think that does include the community. So thank you.
All right. This is incredibly exciting. Thank you for joining us. It looks like you just needed a firm direction. And my sense is that you got it. So I look forward to the next update. And thanks for the presentation and all the good, good work that's been done on this. Appreciate it.
Yeah, and Madam Mayor, council members, again, thank you for your time. And I forgot to add that we would welcome you all's input as we go throughout this process. So however much you all want to be involved in the planning and next steps, we would absolutely welcome that. So thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have our annual public transit briefing. Welcome, Stephen from Valley Regional Transit and, oh, Karen, we got Karen here too from the city of Boise, and then Bree from the city of Boise is here too. Thanks, Public Works team. Have a good night.
Closer? Yeah, really close.
Or maybe just even pull it. I don't know. That looks uncomfortable. But yeah, we couldn't hear you before. Sorry.
Yeah, thank you. So as you said, so once your BRT comes here to give us an annual update of their progress and performance metrics over the last year, we'll follow this up. It's usually a two-step process with that update, and then we'll come back and have a public hearing probably next month and to look forward to the funding for the next year. So with that, I'll pass it off to Stephen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Glad to be here. My name is Stephen Hunt, Development Director at Valley Regional Transit. Also want to acknowledge Greg Eisenberg, who's also in the audience. He's the General Manager for Valley Regional Transit Services in Ada County and responsible for many of the improvements that I'm going to speak to in a minute. So first of all, the topic tonight, we have three things that we want to cover. One is just going over the accomplishments that BRT was able to do in FY21, as well as look at the performance, transit service performance for FY21. And then we'll also look a little forward into the strategic objectives of FY23 and the Transportation Development Plan, or TDP. So FY21 was a year full of planning projects and activities. We launched, we began with completing the charging equipment and infrastructure at the Orchard Maintenance Yard, as well as launching our first battery electric vehicles. We received four of those vehicles and continued to make improvements on the charging infrastructure that's out at Orchard. We're working on a couple of manufacturing issues there. And once those are resolved, we will receive the rest of the twelve battery electric buses that are on order from Proterra. We were able to launch those services at the end of FY21, the electric vehicles in the end of FY21, with an ongoing campaign around the benefits of electric vehicles. And that's been, that was pretty fun and had representation from the city there. Thank you for that. We also launched at the very beginning of FY21, an on-demand transit in Canyon County. So that's been operating for the last, well, sixteen months or so now. And there are things that we think we've learned from that, from that project, which I know there's been interest in Ada County about how we might be able to apply on-demand services here in Ada County. So we'll continue to learn from that and apply it here where necessary. The other big accomplishment of FY21 was we finalized a procurement and installation of upgraded fixed route software that will, that we transitioned from a software called Route Match to ETA, which allows us to continue to improve our public information related to real-time information of buses. The public has better access to that information now with that transition. It also allows us to be a bit more nimble in how we plan and implement new service changes. It also provided a bit of foundation for the multimodal fare application, which was another project that was, we got all the way to the finish line there with the multimodal fare application and launched that at the very beginning of FY21, sorry, FY22. But the hard work of that was completed throughout FY21. And that will allow us to do trip planning and real-time information and payment across multiple modes, whether that's transit, van pool, parking in downtown. And CityGo has been a major partner in leading that effort and builds on the improvements that we made this past year in FY21. The other planning activities that occurred in FY21 include several key steps in improving the State Street corridor. There's the State Street Transit Operational Analysis or the State Street TOA, which reviewed a number of assumptions related to transit service along State Street. We also, and the outcome of that was a list of projects, a portfolio of projects that we'd be able to roll right into construction or funding as those, as those projects were better defined. Meanwhile, we were able to, to develop a stronger grant plan about how we would approach funding the projects that were going to come out of the State Street TOA. We use that grant plan in applying for, in applying for and in our congressional conversations for FY21. We have gone back to that same grant plan as we look at funding strategies for FY22, which we'll speak to a little bit later on. We also have been making improvements in the Orchard Facility Master Plan. So this is a study that looks at all of the, all of the electrical and other facility needs that we have out of the Orchard Facility, the Orchard Maintenance Yard out next to the airport. And that's a critical piece of infrastructure for the electrifying of the rest of the fleet, as well as expansion of the transit fleet as we continue to grow services in Ada County. So that plan will guide investments over the next twenty-plus years and identify where, when, and under what conditions we might need to look to either expand that facility further or even find an additional, an additional maintenance facility. The Fairview Corridor is one of the three best-in-class or premium corridors in Ada County. And we commissioned a study to look at the passenger amenities that would need to be done on the Fairview Corridor. Similar to the State Street TOA, that project resulted in essentially a list of projects. That study resulted in a list of projects that we'd be able to go out and make improvements on to bring that corridor up to the best-in-class or premium levels of services and amenity standards. Through the guidance of the VRT Board, we also commissioned a bus stop typology study in FY21, which looked at how we could improve the visibility of transit by increasing the visibility of the bus stops, as well as the passenger information that's available to bus stops, as well as amenities that would make it more attractive and easier to ride. So you're talking about shelters and benches and trip information at the bus stops, real-time information potentially, and lighting, everything that can make that trip more convenient. We also looked at the Happy Day Transit Center, which is our maintenance facility in Canyon County. And similar to the Orchard Facility, we needed to look at what types of improvements would need to be made at that facility over time. It has some more urgent, near-term needs, including replacing the roof. But we also are looking at how that facility grows and transitions into supporting an electric fleet as well over time. And that was another study that was completed in FY21. So now we just want to go into the performance evaluation of this past year. Before we get into the details of FY21, I did want to give a little bit of a broader history. The most challenging thing about FY21, from a ridership perspective, obviously, has been the impacts of COVID-19. Those began in FY20, and this, this chart illustrates a couple of main points that I want to, I want to make. First, the number one there, that was in January of 2020, that was, January of 2020 was one of the first months that we'd had growth over the previous year in 2019. So we saw ridership growing, coming out of some of the changes that we had made in 2019. And we're excited about the, so the service additions that we'd been making. We were starting to see some growth out of that. And then immediately after that, in February, COVID began. By March, we were seeing significant drops in ridership. We suspended fares in order to help maintain distance on the bus and minimize any transmission of COVID. That ridership decline continued through the rest of FY20. In October of FY20, we re-implemented, reinstituted the fares. We had made changes to how the buses operated and had screens put up between operators and passengers and were able to re-implement fares in November. By February of 2021, we reached the lowest point in ridership that we've seen since COVID began. Since then, we've seen ridership begin to grow back up. In, in May of 2021, we ran our May in Motion campaign where we again offer fair, free, free fares for the month of May in a way to encourage people to come back to transit show and illustrate the number of things that we've done to make traveling by public transportation safe. Then immediately thereafter, there was concerns about the Delta variant, and that ran through the summer of '21. We didn't see a significant decline, but it certainly didn't result in any growth in ridership over the summer and into the fall of FY21. However, by November of '21, we did see the first month-over-year growth in ridership. So November was the first month that we had seen monthly ridership exceed the previous months, the previous year's monthly ridership. So November of '21 was more than November of 2020, and that was the first time that that had happened since actually COVID began. So one more quick slide on that, mentioned that February '21 was the low point in ridership. If we track ridership from that point, you can see that although it's been bumpy, there's been a steady increase in ridership since FY, since February of '21. We haven't seen return, a return to the pre-COVID numbers by any means, but we are encouraged that we've probably seen the bottom of the ridership impacts of COVID. And we're developing plans to have a stronger public campaign around bringing people back to transit as we transition out of, out of this stage of COVID. So looking now at specific ridership for FY21. When we were here last year, it was almost exactly a year ago. We talked about FY20's ridership, and surprisingly, because of a number of reasons, it was actually higher than FY19. And we promised that FY20 is where you would see the impacts of COVID. In fact, you see that. So all the routes, except for one, saw ridership decline and significant decline at that. The, the routes ten and twenty-eight, I wanted to speak to specifically because those two support Boise High School and Frank Church High School, and those you see were more than forty percent down. I believe that a lot of that was due to some of the remote learning that was occurring. And during the twenty-one, the 2021 school year, we expect to see that ridership come back this year. We'll continue to monitor that. We did make, I'll speak to this on the next slide as well, we did make some changes to service and reallocated some hours from the, from the lowest ridership route there on the Route 11 towards a higher productivity route in the seven B. But yes, we saw a significant impact because of COVID and we're continuing to see that in 2022. But hopefully, we're on the uphill side. One of the most important ways to look at ridership is to One of the most important ways to look at product, at ridership is to boil it down to productivity. So you can better compare each individual route. So this is looking at the number of boardings per hour of service. And when we do that, you can see that all three of our best in class or premium quarter services, the Three Vista, the seven B Fairview, and the nine are in the top twenty five percent of productivity. And that's boardings per hour. That threshold set at, at almost thirteen boardings per hour. This again is reflecting the impacts of COVID. It was previously higher than that. And then the bottom twenty five percent are, are highlighted there in red. I mentioned that in the beginning of FY twenty one, we did reallocate the services of the eleven Garden City Route to the seven B Fairview Route. And those, as we've looked at the, we took those hours from the eleven Garden City and put them in the peak period of the seven B, and we have seen ridership growth in, in the seven B peak period trips. So we'll be excited to continue to watch that over FY twenty two. We also are reviewing the performance of the eight X, considering some potential changes there to potentially address some of the poor performance of, of that route. I already mentioned the ten. We expect to see some of that productivity come back as we have all day, or all year in school service or in school learning. Onto on time performance. So there are two slides in here about on time performance. This one looks at individual routes on time performance by all day. And building on the changes that we've seen, the improvements we've seen in on time performance since FY nineteen. Since most of the routes saw significant improvements in on time performance, all routes are now above eighty percent on time all day, which is, which is significant. Back in FY nineteen, the average, I think, was the, the average all day performance was in the seventies. So this is a significant improvement to have all routes above our previous average in nineteen. Twelve of the eighteen routes are above ninety percent on time. And the bottom twenty five percent threshold is, is all the way up at eighty eight percent. So we've seen some really dramatic improvements in on time performance throughout the day. This, similar to, just wanted to highlight those routes that are doing the best and those routes that are in the bottom of the on time performance. And we will continue to review each individual route's performance and make recommendations to, to that performance with upcoming service changes. We were asked to also look at the, the peak hour on time performance, not just the all day on time performance. And so what you see here is actually the, the top and bottom performance, performers related to the PM peak hour. So there are two peaks that we talk about, the AM commute and the PM commute. PM commute is typically the one that we're, where we see the highest or the lowest on time performance of the highest on time performance problems. And even so, with that, only one route was below eighty percent. That's one that we'll, we'll look at and see how we can make some improvements there. But a, a lot of these routes are, all these routes are performing far better than they were even just a year ago. So next, I want to, to transition to, I'm going to have one quick slide on current year priorities, but then also looking at twenty twenty three and the TDP strategic objectives. So this current year FY twenty two, just wanted to highlight the initiatives that we've got going on this year. We are continuing that State Street Transit Operational Analysis. That should wrap up before the end of this quarter. We are preparing a raise grant, which is a significant funding opportunity for the projects that are coming out of the Transit Operational Analysis on State Street. And we have been having some really productive conversations with our partners on, on that opportunity. We will be proposed, or preparing a transportation development plan that looks at both service and capital improvements over the next five years. So that would be for twenty three through twenty seven. And so we've been working with our partners on identifying transit priorities in Ada and Canyon County. Mentioned the bus stop typology study that will also wrap up this year. And we kicked off a, a study of public transportation in Kuna. There's been growing support from the, the Kuna City Council on, on public transportation connections out there. And again, we will complete the Orchard Facility Master Plan this year. So the, the investment strategies we have for both FY twenty three and the Transportation Development Plan, those years twenty three to twenty seven, really build on the investment strategies that we developed throughout the, throughout COVID. And that is first ensuring that the agency has the, the ability to continue operating existing services and be resilient towards any kind of impacts that may come our way. We have a priority of maintaining our assets in a state of good repair. So that's something that we have been focusing on with all of our partners to ensure that we have vehicles that, that operate and, and our assets are, are in good condition. And then our third priority would be looking at making those improvements to access to transit. So a lot of the elements that are identified, again, State Street TOA and, and other transit corridor investments to make it easier for people to, to get to and from transit. That's actually been something that we talk a lot about with all of our constituents, whether that's folks who are in wheelchairs or what, or ambulatory or cyclists. How do we improve that connectivity to transit? And then finally, also resuming the service enhancements we had planned through Valley Connect two point O and that we were discussing before, before COVID. Then just to close where we are in the, in the development process. First quarter, we spent some time working with our, with our stakeholders to identify the investment priorities for them and review assumptions of what needed to be addressed over the coming years. This quarter, we're going to really be looking at developing that draft. We will be going out to the public in May with the draft Transportation Development Plan. And we will be coming to each of our funding partners with, with our proposed FY twenty three contribution request through the cost allocation model and that's what we'll be doing through the first quarter, or sorry, the second quarter. And then refining that through the third quarter and finalizing all of those plans and budgets in quarter four. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, which is worth it. Stephen, thanks for the presentation and thanks especially for the cooperation, collaboration that we have with VRT on the raise grant. Really excited about that opportunity. Go ahead, council member.
Yeah, Stephen, thank you for the presentation. Transportation presentations aren't always the most exciting things in the world. So I appreciate you making it digestible for everyone. One of the first things that you talked about was some of the success you had with on demand transit in Caldwell. And I was wondering if you could just inform us a little bit more of what that was, who was using it? Like, how, how does that on demand service work and why was it successful in Caldwell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Holly Burton. The, the benefits that we've seen from the on demand transition in Canyon County has been really opening up new places that hadn't had service to having access to service. Though, and the one kind of most explicit example is the Idaho Job Corps, which currently was off of a fixed route service. It's in an awkward place to get to. Has become one of our highest trip generators in Canyon County. And it's a, it's an important facility for us to be providing transit service to as it's helping individuals get on a career track. And we've had a great relationship with them, which is developing into potentially additional resources to expand transit service out there. That's, that's the, the flavor of the improvements that we see with on demand or, or the value of it. Its challenges are in how do you make sure that it's accessible to as many people as possible? It certainly has creates new barriers that weren't, that aren't there with fixed route. You have to, you do have to find a way to book the trip. So you either have to call, you have to have a phone. That's that additional step that you've got to take. And by the nature of on demand, you, you don't have subscription kinds of trips. So it's every day and every day occurrence, you got to go and find that trip. So there, there certainly are downsides to it as well. But the, the benefits of on demand is it being able to be flexible. Maybe potentially supporting one time events is another thing that we're looking at doing in Canyon County more aggressively, seeing how it might be able to support maybe the Canyon County or the Snake River Stampede or any of their kind of one off events.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, just a quick follow up there. And those are, that's, is that a combination of vans and the buses? Is it just, what is the, doing the transport?
So the on demand version that we have in Canyon County is actually using via on our fixed route, what were our fixed route vehicles? So it's, it's, it looks the same as the fixed route. It just operates differently.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Stephen. Really appreciate the information that you brought us today. I have a couple of questions. So as I look at the the data that you showed us, it, it, it's discouraging in some ways to see the drop off, but encouraging in others to look at where we have strength in ridership and strength in boardings per hour. And as I look forward, really looking for, to see what we can do with the Fairview Route once we combine the two and improve the frequency and extend the hours on that route. Beyond that, as I look at what I see in our service portfolio, it's clear that the Emerald Route is well used despite some barriers, lack of frequency, for instance. It's also clear that the Broadway Route has lost maybe the most consistent use. And I wonder if you could speak to those two. One, what do you foresee in connecting the Emerald Route? Maybe more fully to some of our best in class or figuring out ways to bring it closer to best in class? And on Broadway, maybe talking about, what are the barriers there? Is it the BSU Shuttle that's siphoned some of that ridership off? Is it just COVID? Is it schedule? What are the things that we might think about on those two routes to kind of poise them, if you will, for our next best in class?
Madam Mayor, thank you, Councilmember Clegg. So first, related to the Emerald Route, it has long been one of the more productive routes in the system. It provides some important connections between Town Square Mall, St. Owls, and some of the shelter, not shelters, but some of the, some of the places that it serves as it comes into, into downtown Boise generate a lot of ridership. And so we, I mean, our vision would be to continue to increase the, that service. So it has thirty minute all day service, because right now it has thirty minute peak hour service and then hourly midday. Potentially having it half thirty minute Saturday service would also be really valuable. It, it's a, the kind of service that would be well suited to support farmers markets that happen to be along it actually on a weekend. So there's a lot of reasons why that, that particular route has a strong purpose on, on the weekend. So yes, the, the vision that we'd have for bringing the Emerald Route into the fold, so to speak, would just be to increase its midday frequency and its weekend frequency and maybe pushing its span out a little later at night as well. As far as the two Broadways concerned, we have been making some improvements in span and frequency on it. You mentioned that its ridership was down maybe more than others. I, I don't see that necessarily in the, in the percent change. It's a, it's down fifteen percent over FY twenty. Its performance is middling in terms of its productivity, but it continues to be, I think, an important corridor, both in terms of productivity and in terms of total number of, of boardings. I, there are ways that you could streamline it further. It has a funny little hook as it goes through south, southeast Boise. Our vision long term is that you might be able to cover that with an additional route that just stays on Boise Avenue all the way through, instead of trying to cover Broadway and Boise Avenue on one route. But those, those are service decisions about how much, how much resource we have on individual routes. So I think that would be my response to those two questions.
I can't get unmuted. So then, thank you. I, I appreciate that info. The other question I have, as I look at some of our other routes, which I think are really important to the service model to provide connections, but aren't particularly, they're not terribly unproductive, but they're not great either. Have you looked at ways to improve the productivity on those, not maybe with frequency or extended hours, but with the places, the locations of the connections they make to other places and other routes? Or is there, are they just what they are?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Clegg, no, we, we continue to look at ways that we can improve the existing routes. I mentioned that we do have some concepts for ways that we think we could improve the eight X, for example. It provides, it, it's an awkward routing the way it is right now. We could provide more direct service out to the HP, the former HP campus, which is important as, as the Idaho State Employment Center continues to grow out there, providing to a more direct service is something that we think would, would benefit that route. It's, it's a poor performing route. The other one that shows up on there is, is the four Roosevelt Route is another one that we think could potentially, you can make some changes to that might improve it. It, it provides some, some duplication as it comes into town. You might be able to, I mean, yes, we continue to look at different ways to, to make improvements to existing services, certainly. And we feel that there are some opportunities, both in the central and the west bench area.
Thank you. Yeah. So I ask these questions hoping that there are members of the public watching, knowing that we will be having a public hearing. Everything I just talked about costs more money. We don't necessarily have more money to spend. But if we are going to make changes, we need to understand what would be most important to people. So I bring all those up so that people hopefully can think about it themselves. And when we do have that public hearing, bring us their thoughts. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Just dovetailing a little bit off the council president's comments about the public's involvement in this. You know, I, I know that there have been folks, constituents who have wanted to come testify at City Hall for different issues that pertain to them. But the bus situation has prevented them from coming out. So I, I wonder, does, does VRT, do folks pay visits to neighborhood associations and such to, to see about getting, going to them where transportation may, may inhibit their ability to give input? Just wondering if that happens.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sanchez, that's a great question. And it's one area that we are looking to make improvements in particular this year. We, we have hired a, another staff person to help us with that. Our challenge has always been in staffing the, the different number of events and, and locations that we could do outreach. But we have added staff to help us with that. We have made some, I mean, oh, we, yes, we have always tried to go out to the, the council or the neighborhood associations, at least in terms of informing and trying to get, and soliciting input. Where we probably haven't been as much as we would like to be, would just be being present at those events. Going to their meetings specifically is something that we want to do more of. And, but we've always used them as a, as an outlet to try and get information out to the public and solicit input into whether it's a survey or to make them aware of upcoming opportunities or events. Main Street Station has been another thing that's really changed our ability to engage directly with the public by, by having tableings or opportunities to engage with people as they're using the system, which is another effective way of trying to get the word out. But yes, we would like to increase our presence at, at those neighborhood associations and plan to do so in the future.
Great. Thank you. Just a quick follow up, Madam Mayor. I had the opportunity to chat with someone who volunteers with VRT. And she shared a story with me about a young woman she met at one of the bus stops. And turns out, a young woman attends CWI and just shared with her the route that she takes. It takes her two hours using our, our public transportation system. When if she used a vehicle, it would be a twenty using our, our public transportation system, when if she used a vehicle, it would be a twenty-minute drive. And I just, I found that compelling. I really appreciate you highlighting the Job Corps program and how folks participating in that program are using the system. I, I would encourage more of that. You know, for example, this young woman probably may not be a part of a neighborhood association, but perhaps connecting with, with, with CWI and seeing if there's an opportunity to talk to students who, who are like this young woman. And I mean, I find that to be incredibly admirable. You know, going to school, working and committing that much effort to complete an education, to move up in life. And, and being willing to commit two hours just in travel, I think is something to be admired. And would love to hear from folks like that about the input that they would give you about how to improve the system.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sanchez, yes, we, that CWI is one of our, they, they sit on our board. And when we reach out to them frequently, they are our funding partner on, on a number of services. It is a challenge to cover the, the entire Treasure Valley with public transportation options. We just completed a, or in the process of completing a survey about transportation and how things may have changed since COVID. And one statistic that stuck out in my mind was of the people that were surveyed. I think it was thirty percent of them commuted into downtown Boise, whereas seventy percent of them were going to other places in the Treasure Valley. And, and that's what we're tasked with doing is trying to serve all of those transportation needs. And it, it becomes a challenge as we rely on, on the contributions of, of everybody to make a regional system. So yes, those are common, common kinds of experiences and we're working on improving them.
Yes, go ahead. I have a question in terms of what ridership should be. If you look at our population for the region and our investment, is there a North Star about what we should be seeing compared to other cities?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, well, it's, it depends a lot on kind of where you're at. And so when we developed Valley Connect two point O, we did a peer review of our service compared to others. And the, one of the most compelling things about transit service is that people will use it when it's available to them. The reasons that people don't use it that we hear from the public and that we know is, well, it doesn't come when I need it to come. And it doesn't go where I need it to go. And both of those things are answered by levels of service or the amount that we invest in transit. And what we found is that among our peers from places like Reno, Nevada or Spokane, the, the, the amount of service that we provide, the Treasure Valley is about between a quarter and a fifth of what those communities provide to their, to their constituents. And it's reflected then in its utilization. So, because transit isn't linear, like you don't, every hour of service isn't the same. The more service you put out there, the more attractive it becomes. And the more ridership you'll get on a, on a per-unit basis. So we would expect that if we were to increase our service, we would see an increase in productivity. So you have a double improvement in terms of ridership. So is there a specific number? You can compare our ridership, our, our productivity numbers to others. I am trying, I'm struggling to remember what exactly, say, the average boardings per hour for fixed route service in Spokane is. I think it's in the twenties, but, and we're right now in the middle of COVID at eleven. Before that, we think we were twelve to thirteen or fourteen. So there's room to grow, but I, I would caution us to think that we, that you can somehow kind of like choke your way into that productivity. It comes with being able to have the, the availability of service that people can make choices around their travel that lets them rely on transit. And that means there needs to be more of it.
That's very insightful. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if there's time and nobody else has anything, I've got one more question, but if someone has enough something, I'll certainly leave it open. Sure. So I know, well, first of all, thank you for, for all the work all throughout COVID, keeping people healthy, keeping people on the bus, getting the ridership there. I noticed, you know, in your, in the graph, early on, there was still a fair amount of ridership and then it kind of, you know, dropped off or tailed off a little bit afterwards. And some of that, I think, happened during times of free ridership. When there was free ridership, there were some higher amounts and people were continuing to use it. And I know that those are just growing conversations as far as transportation equity and a guaranteed right to transportation. We're starting to see it in city councils across the country. And I expect that when we have a public hearing, there may be some public testimony that talks with us about that. I'm just curious, your involvement in some of those transportation equity discussions? And if you did see some of those numbers stay higher because of those free fares?
Councilmember, excuse me, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Holly Burton, we, when we did an affair analysis back in two thousand and nineteen as we were, because we actually did a fair increase at the beginning of FY twenty, I believe it was. We evaluated different options and we looked at what we thought the impact of going fare-free would be. And as best we could tell, we would see between a ten and thirteen percent increase in ridership. If we, if we eliminated fares. What has been consistent as we've asked the riders about, like, what are the barriers to transit? The cost of the service doesn't usually come up as one of, as the highest need. What comes up as the highest need is is the amount of service. So it needs to come more often. It needs to go, go out later and it needs to go more places. So when we're faced with the choice of where do we put our public dollars? Do we put our public dollars to subsidize fares? Or do we use it to put out more service? Our recommendation has been, I think you will get more ridership and even fares. If we go ahead and put that, that public investment in service levels as opposed to offsetting fare costs.
Madam Mayor, thank you for, for the answer there. And then certainly, you know, the costs are complicated and more, maybe more so in Idaho than any other place. I'm wondering if, if we're seeing any ARPA funding. I know that we're working on our RISE grant together or RACE grant together. I'm wondering if we're seeing anything coming forward that would address some of those equity issues as far as payment goes through ARPA, through some of the infrastructure stuff, if there's a priority that you're seeing in some of that funding.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Holly Burton, yes, there is, there is an emphasis on, on equity in the, in the new infrastructure bill. There are increases in formula and, and competitive dollars that we'll be able to use to help offset some of, some of the general costs. How we look at applying them to, say, fares specifically is, I think, is, is an open question. At, at the board, we've, we've reaffirmed the importance of fares being an important part of a sustainable system. It just means that as people use it more, you're able to respond to that use as opposed to, if there was no connection between fares and, well, if there was no revenue from fares, then, then there's no direct response that you can make because people use the service more. So yes, in all of the, the upcoming funding, there is an emphasis on, on equity. And it's something that we certainly want to do. And again, I think our focus is on making sure that we are serving those populations, those areas with higher levels of service and, and connecting them to the opportunities in the valley would be the, I believe, the, the most important and meaningful connect investment.
All right. Anybody else online? We are at time. I want to thank you for the presentation and for the work that you're doing, thanks, council, for the conversation. We, the next steps will be a hearing where more of this is looked at. We do that annually as a city and really appreciate the partnership.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council.
And with that, that's the last item on the agenda. It's five thirty. We don't have an executive session, so we're going to a quick break for dinner and we'll be back here at six.